Eleven twenty-two regular meeting of the Board of Schools Trustees be approved as presented. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Crystal motion.
I'll second.
You go first.
George will second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Approval of the minutes. It's recommended that the minutes of the March fourteenth twenty twenty-two regular board meeting be approved as presented. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Melissa will motion. Second?
I'll second.
Crystal second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Do you want to oppose or just abstain?
Subst- abstain.
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 Okay, so the motion carries for O with one abstaining.
And you're abstaining because you weren't present?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, and then we have statements from the public. Uh Frank Ingram.
Okay, uh this question I have is based on some new legislation and it's mainly for the attorney if she can interpret something for me. I'm reading, I want to read from Mark Messner I think is the one who put this out. It says, uh our K through twelve schools and communities across Indiana, but over the past few years, some parents have expressed increasing concern regarding lack of opportunities for public input in school board meetings. In response to these concerns, this session, I supported Senate Enroll- Enroll Act eighty-three and House Enroll Act eleven thirty. These new laws require school boards to allow comments from individuals who are physically present during in-person meetings. They also specify comment period must occur before the school board takes final action on the topic. These new laws also preserve a school board's ability to run their meetings effectively by ensuring they can still maintain decorum and set time limits in order to complete business in a timely manner. Additionally, full virtual meetings will only be allowed during a disaster emergency. Democracy works when there is an open line of communication and everyone is actively engaged. These measures will ensure the public has full access to their elected school officials and will provide an avenue for citizens to express their thoughts in a way that works for everyone. Uh in, on our agenda here at South Spencer, this statements from the public is very, it's very beginning. Anything that participates or anything that passes or talks about throughout the evening, the public hasn't went to it. Now, is this, did this law pass? And how does this affect the meetings that they have here at South Spencer?
Yeah, the law's passed, um it's effective July the first of this year. Um it simply just requires public comment at board meetings. It may shock you to know that there were some school corporations across the state that didn't allow any public comment. And that's the whole crux of this bill was to require public comment in a public school board meeting. Um the, the, at least since I've been hired, this board has allowed public comment. It's the board's discretion on the timing of when the public comment occurs. If it's early in the meeting or late in the meeting. Um there are school boards that, that I represent that do it, do it different ways. And so this legislation doesn't require the board to do it either way. It's, it's their discretion. They can also limit the public comment to, you know, three minutes, five minutes, however long they want to limit public comment to. They can require you to sign in. They can limit public comment to only items on the agenda and if, and not anything outside of the agenda. So really, this is probably a discussion that the board should maybe have in an executive session if there's any desire to change how this board handles public comment going forward.
But, but the intent of the law is for the public to participate or be a part of with the open document, the statements from the public. So at the beginning, you don't, you don't, there's, there's, I'm sure there's more questions toward the end of the meeting than there is before the meeting started.
Yeah, and I think the board, you, you hear these comments and you can take those into consideration when making a decision if you want to change your, your, the way that you handle public comment going forward.
Wow.
Lightning strike. Um, am I wrong to say that our agenda is, uh, our agenda is posted prior to the meeting anyway on the website, right? Not on the website, no. It's not under the crystal website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, superintendents report.
Alright. We have an all Spencer County basketball team. Those who made the all Spencer County basketball team was Holden Compton, Kale Donahoe, and Kayden Duball. On the female side of it was Trent Debrick, Molly Schulte, and Kate Menntendle. So congrats to both of them. Uh PAC Academic All Conference was Jackson Roth. And Evansville Courier Press, all Southwest Indiana First Team was Holden Compton. Congratulations to those as well. Very successful. Um also, you'll notice that this summer, uh, we're going to be replacing some of the doors, part of this building, part of the new ninety-eight, or the old ninety-eight, doors, locks, and that kind of thing, just anything that they'd get replaced before. So it kind of closes out, um, the renovation for the high school, also auditory doors, there's eight doors there. That's still the old version of the old doors, so that'll all be replaced as well. Uh you'll notice the facelift on the concession stand out at the baseball field. So that was done, we worked on it yesterday, uh, Sunday, and then also this afternoon, so it should be done as well. So that should do it for me.
Okay, I think consent items. Approve the payroll claims docket and the accounts payable claims number two twenty-seven to three fifty-nine. Approve the treasurer's financial reports. Accept the resignations of the following. Approve to post the positions and grant permission to hire. Mike Harris, seventh grade girls' basketball coach, effective March fourteenth twenty twenty-two. Justice Taylor, sixth grade girls' basketball coach, effective March twenty-first twenty twenty-two. Karen Reardon, um, South Spencer High School, twelve-month custodian, effective April first twenty twenty-two. And Amy Cole, bus driver, effective May nineteenth twenty twenty-two. And then last, approve the out-of-state overnight transportation requests. The archery team to Louisville for Nationals, May twelfth through fourteenth twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion to accept these?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Melissa will motion. George will second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have some discussion. We received this week an email, uh, with the balances of, on the invoice regarding our new attorneys. You guys are doing fantastic work. With that, in the last forty-five days, we've incurred a total of six thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents in, uh, bills. And the items that are highlighted here in yellow on your invoice are things that we have, uh Terry McDaniel with the search team, in his contract or with our approval of using them, there were several things in there that were part of the fee or part of the proposal that they provided to us for hiring of a superintendent. And there's one, two, three, four items where the board president has called the law firm of Zimer, Stamen, Weitzel, and Sholders to conduct business using, uh, that, that counsel. We also paid thirty-five hundred dollars a year for Julie Slavens and Lisa Townsill with the Indiana School Board Association. And if I read down through here, it says, email with the board president, review of, review email with the board president, teleconference with Janet Stermer, review correspondence with the superintendent uh regarding, uh, email exchange with the board president. So go through all these things to just say, we need to be, uh, good stewards of our, of our money. One of the items on here says, review the emails for board president. Contact the State Board of Accounts regarding attendance at, uh, entrance conference. Research normal practices and provide advice via email. And this was for over an hour or over, or at an hour for two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So this is stuff that is done for one of three reasons. It's either done to educate the person who's emailing. It is, they reached out to contact the State Board of Accounts because they don't trust Melissa Davis, the treasurer, who's done multiple of these, Dr. Rutherford, who's done multiple of these, and myself that sat in on the meeting. Uh, we've done multiple of these and there was no contact with me whatsoever. I'll let Dr. Rutherford speak for himself on that. But one of the reasons why this is concerning to me is the date on this one is three-ten of twenty-two. And this is right after we got an email from Melissa Davis, our treasurer, indicating that she wanted someone to step up to the plate and attend the opening conference. And I replied back that I was more than willing to do that. And she would send my name in, and then we had emails from other board members. And one of the other board members, uh, had interest in it because there are some things coming up from two thousand and nineteen regarding spending of funds that I don't think was appropriate for that person to be involved in the meeting. So it just so happens that the day that that takes place, the very next day, our board president reaches out to legal counsel, asking them to notify the State Board of Account, or call State Board of Accounts to ask questions about who should attend the opening conference, research the normal practices, and provide advice via email. If I paid two hundred and twenty-five dollars for the advice and we've already paid for it, how come the rest of the board doesn't know what that discussion was about? So with that, all I ask that is when we spend money, the taxpayer dollar, that we do it in a fiscally conservative way and that it benefits all parties involved in the school corporation. That's my discussion.
Hey, any other discussion?
I don't.
Okay, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent items?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five O. And then administrative recommendations. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve Nick Ante as the twenty twenty-two summer school English teacher. Can I get a motion?
I move that we, uh, elect to hire Nick Ante for the summer school English teacher position.
Matt motions. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Melissa will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five O. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve Brett Schulte as the twenty twenty-two summer school math teacher.
I'll make a motion.
Crystal motion.
I'll second.
George will second. I will abstain. So all those in favor? Or any discussion, I'm sorry, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain, so motion carries O or four O with one abstaining. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve John Hurley as the twenty twenty-two summer school SAE teacher.
I'll motion.
Melissa will motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Crystal second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five O. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve to hire Kara Wilson as a daycare assistant at Lucy Elementary pending a clear background check.
I'll motion.
Melissa will motion.
I'll second.
George will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five O. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve to hire Herbert Dan Rohrscheib as a twelve-month custodian at South Spencer Middle School pending a clear background check. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Melissa will motion, a second.
I'll second.
Crystal second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five O. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the revision of Matt Britton's twenty twenty-one, twenty-two contract, increasing from one ninety-six days to two hundred and six days with the included addendum.
I'll motion.
George will motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second George's motion.
Any discussion?
Yes. So, this contract, uh, goes back all the way till last fall. And we met as a board and then Dean Schiff, Dr. Rutherford, Jonathan Mays, and myself met with the negotiation team last fall and we went through line item by line item. Every position regarding the teachers and their DCA schedules and so forth. And this was clearly defined as what his schedule was. So, I'm going to lay down some history regarding how, what's transpired. And I just want to tell you ahead of time that I support Coach Britton. I think he's done a fantastic job. And, uh, just going to give you the, the background here. On January eleventh at five twenty-nine PM, Veronica Hobbs reached out to the board and said, "I've begun to prepare a grievance for the athletic director's stipend. I have included both the current president and the past president as well in this issue." On the same evening, approximately four hours later, our board president, uh, Mrs. Stermer replied back, "The board is going to have a special meeting on January twenty-first to hire an attorney per our board meeting on Monday evening. I will get back with you in contact after hiring and consulting the attorney." The next morning, Veronica Hobbs replies back, "Thank you," exclamation mark. Jonathan, our attorney, took time to put together a report to file to Veronica Hobbs, and that was delivered on January twelfth. Veronica Hobbs has then replied to the board, it says, this was to Jonathan and carbon copied all of us, "The board will be hiring their attorney during a special session. I will let the board have their discussion with their attorney and wait for the board president to let me know when they are ready." And that was on January twelfth. So fast forward from January twelfth to February tenth, when I was told by multiple people that our board president asked Dr. Rutherford to change or consider giving a stipend to the athletic director in trade for their support as legal counsel for this corporation. Then, on February eleventh, the very next day, Veronica Hobbs replies, "Madam Board President, after speaking to the CTA president, we would like to extend the deadline on the grievance to the next board meeting in March." So, that was in February, on the, on the afternoon of February eleventh. Well, this next email involves February twenty-fifth, but I'm going to step back a minute and talk about what happened on February twelfth and thirteenth. The athletic director reached out to me and asked if he could meet with me to discuss his frustration with some of the things going on. And I specifically told him I would not talk money, I will not bargain, I will not do anything regarding the salary, but I'd be more than happy to listen to him. So we met in this very room and we had a discussion. And when it was all said and done, I told him several of the things that he had been told, he was been, been mis-told regarding what the corporation's views are. So I told him it was in his best interest to consider reaching out to the superintendent to conduct a meeting and I would be more than happy to join him. So we did that. On February thirteenth, he met Dr. Rutherford and I in Dr. Rutherford's office. Where again, we did not talk about money, we did not talk about adding a salary or a stipend. All we talked about was answering the questions that he proposed. And one of the things that Dr. Rutherford conveyed to him in my presence was for us to really understand what all you do outside of your teaching contract hours. If you'll take the next two to three weeks and write down a list of the things that you, uh, do as part of your duties as the athletic director, it would shine light to the board and to everyone else as to what we're having covered. Because that's how we got here this evening. So that was done on February twenty-fifth here at the high school. Dr. Rutherford and Mr. Bush met with Coach Britton and asked him that. On March fourth, I've got an email to the board that left out Dr. Rutherford, left, left out Mr. Bush, and it says, South Spen- this is to the South Spencer School Board. The South Spencer CTA would like to notify the South Spencer School Board that on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, at one-thirty Superintendent Rutherford and Mr. Bush called a teacher into the office to request the teacher, uh, list his daily duties. The administrator told the teacher that the list would be taken before the board to request pay for more days and ongoing disagreements regarding the payment of the athletic director's duties that will not be discussed here because discussion might include further legal action. According to the current teacher's contract, administrators are not legally allowed to negotiate salaries with teachers. See the insert below, and that's Article One under general conditions. Any change in salary or stipend must be discussed with the CTA exclusively, having their representation available. So, you would think that's where it ends. But on March eighth, Veronica Hobbs replies back to the school board president and the rest of the board. It says, "Following the recent inaccuracies given to the paper, we consulted with our ISTA attorney and after our consultation with the ISTA attorney in careful consideration, we are withdrawing the grievance, but we are discussing other options for legal relief." Which, that reminds me. If you look at that date of March eighth, and we go back to legal counsel's invoice that I showed you, on March eighth, it says that someone reached out regarding the confidentiality of communication regarding bargaining, pre and post collective bargaining agreement. And the very next day, it replies back, "Email to the board president regarding confidentiality of communications outside of the bargaining and discuss outside counsel's contract." So Jonathan Mays, the person that we hired to represent the corporation to do all negotiating of our contracts, he spoke on our behalf. Dean and Richard and myself did a great job putting stuff together. He presented it on our behalf, so there was one voice from the corporation. It just so happens that the day of and the day after, we had bills ranging close to six hundred dollars in fees requesting our board president to ask questions about his contract and whether or not we can keep him or should keep him on our payroll in regards to this, uh, balance. So with that being said, the questions that I have, we have a board member that's an ISTA member. We have a board member who's a member of a CTA. We have a board member that is Veronica Hobbs, our board member who's an ISTA member and CTA member, their regional union director. Lot of things have been brought up here. Lot of concerns that I have regarding Matt Britton. I will make the, I will agree to support Mr. Britton, but the methodologies and mechanisms that we've done to get here are pathetic. That's my discussion.
Agreed.
So, I guess, uh, after all that, are we bound legally by the CTA? To, are they okay with this contract?
Dr. Rutherford and I met with Veronica Hobbs and Coach Britton to discuss resolution to this, um, situation. And this was the resolution that was agreed upon, which was adding ten day, adding, doing an addendum or amending his current teaching contract and adding ten days. So he's going from one hundred and ninety-six days to two hundred and six days.
So does that mean, will, there won't be further label repercussions?
I asked her before that meeting, now why don't you talk to that?
So to answer your question on that, with Jonathan Mays, this was all over and done at the very beginning, before any of this came about. In other words, Jonathan Mays gave us several emails that specifically said that was not part of the bargaining agreement. And if we were going to add days, that does not involve the CTA. I mean, he was very crystal clear. He gave every, all the way down the line with that. So the only thing that has happened since then, you know, it's just tough when you have a CTA member and the person over them is, you just have collusion in other words. So, it's just not good. It, it's not healthy for South Spencer School Corporation, is what it was not. None of this should have happened. This should have all been taken care of back in, you know, October, November. None of this should, we shouldn't be at this point now.
So my question is then, what happens, this is the end of the school year?
Correct.
What happens, start of next school year?
There will have to be some further discussion about Mr. Britton and what his role will be with the corporation next school year and what kind of contract he will be under.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we know for sure. Let's get the rest of this done. I won't, I don't want to pay this out and then we're going to face something ten, you know, thirty days from now at the end of the school year. Because it's going to, the end of the school year is here.
It's unfair to Mr. Britton. He's the one, he's the one stuck in the middle of this.
Yes, I agree.
Isn't the easier solution, CTA member to resign?
Okay, so.
Right now, there's a motion to amend the current motion, so there needs to be a second for any discussion to be had on that.
I'll second it.
Yeah, not even discussed, yeah. The, the proposal in front of you, Mr. Brown, is to make a solution through the end of this school year.
And also to go with that, from the very beginning, when we first even started negotiations, that would be with Matt Britton, Dean Schiff, myself and Jonathan Mays. This was the solution at the very beginning. Was to add the days, the ten days. That was what the plan was from day one.
I'm not against that.
Yeah.
My concern is, is, we're going to turn around and face this again and, and just short-term?
Are you worried about legal proceedings? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
I guess what I'm saying is, is this contract ends this school year.
Yes, so will we have to do another contract for next school year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three?
So what keeps them from wanting to, something else to begin?
Well, this is not the CTA. The CTA has, shouldn't, negotiations is over and has been over. So CTA has nothing to do with this. Even adding extra days, well, they shouldn't. The CTA should not have anything to do with that. That's very illegal. They have nothing to do with it. As a board, okay, we have the latitude to, you have the latitude to add extra days. That's not part of the CTA, correct?
That is correct. The current collective bargaining agreement doesn't have on the schedule a stipend for an athletic director. And so that is the position that the board finds itself in and that Coach Britton has been performing duties as an athletic director under a regular teaching contract with additional days, days already added to that contract. But there was some discussion about, um, further compensation for those duties. And the resolution with, with Mr. Britton was to add ten days to his contract for the school year.
So are we adding, is the addendum to the, the bargaining piece?
No.
Only the?
Only to his contract.
And we can't, we cannot put an addendum on the bargaining?
We cannot.
It's to your contract.
Correct.
So we're going to do this again?
But you heard the verbiage that was used throughout this. You know, the threat of grievance, the promise of agreements, the, the stepping back and saying, "Hey, wait till we get new counsel or wait till we get rid of the counsel that's been handling this." It's, like I said, it's a sad, sad state of affairs for Coach Britton because he deserves this.
Correct.
But because the, because of the steps that were taken and the threats that have been made. And I don't use that threat in terms of threatening physical violence, but verbally threatening grievances and following, you know, legal actions has been from day one from both Veronica and the CTA president and the correspondence that you all see.
From whenever you guys met together, um, in your office, um, I'm assuming that everybody agreed was one hundred percent in agreeance with this. Do you think that by how that meeting went, that that would possibly potentially continue on to next year? For the school year of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three? No, Dr. Rutherford and I left it open for the next school year about what their arrangement with Mr. Britton would be going forward. Whether he goes on the administrator contract, whether there's another regular teaching contract with additional days added, um, whether he's just simply a teacher and a coach next year and the corporation hires another athletic director. All those options were discussed with Mr. Britton. And there were no, I mean, there was no decisions made because that's a board decision to make. Did Mr. Britton stress what he would like to pursue next year? He did not. Okay. Not in that meeting. But since this is pertaining to this school year, why postpone this whenever regardless we're going to, if we have this discussion again for next school year?
My, my thought of it is, if it don't feel right, it probably ain't right.
I only bring it up from a standpoint of transparency.
I only bring it up from a standpoint of transparency.
Okay.
I agree that Mr. Britton deserves it. He has been an astonishing coach. I think he deserves this, so. So would you take a vote on the motion to table the discussion first?
All right, so all those in favor to table this discussion?
I'm torn. I could go either way. Like I said, Coach Britton deserves it, but at the same point in time, there's no language that stops anything.
As far as your superintendent, I'd like to go ahead and see us take care of this. I know this was the plan from the very beginning, and I think he's deserving.
I agree with you.
My two cents.
So again, to table this, any votes for yes? Any opposed?
Yes. Aye.
All right. So the motion does not carry.
So now you're about to motion.
Now we can go back to.
Motion to approve the addendum.
The motion to approve the addendum.
So the motion's.
The motion, yes, seconded by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? So the motion to carry the addendum and to approve that is five oh. New business of the board, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the math textbook adoption for the middle school as presented.
A motion.
Melissa will motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Crystal second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. First reading of Neola Bylaws and Policies, Volume Thirty-three, Number One and Two, Volume Thirty-four, Number One, and Special Update for Non-Discrimination and Anti-Harassment. Can I get a motion?
A motion.
And a second?
A motion.
So motion by Melissa, second by George. Any discussion?
Yeah, can you give us an update on, is this new policies and procedures only, or are we reviewing the entire volumes regarding this? This was.
Lot of it is, lot of it's reviewed. And what this is, is we go through a Neola policies. Company review all the policies. With that, we have an Indiana law firm, Lewis Cappas, who reviews all policies. And there's also another group at Washington DC that takes care of anything, federal and state. So anything we get is totally covered legally.
So this is our standard review?
This is standard review, yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh.
I do have one more under new business. It's not on the agenda, but in our last meeting, I had asked for this to be on the agenda, but I didn't see it, accepting the request for proposal for real estate brokers on the twenty-seven acres to be sold for future housing. I just didn't see that on the agenda, so can we add that to the agenda? But we accept the request for proposal for real estate brokers regarding the twenty-seven acres, only to see what's feasible.
I'll make that motion.
Good. I'll second.
Okay. Sorry, I'm still writing. So.
It's to accept the request for proposal from real estate brokers regarding twenty-seven acres to be sold for future housing.
So this is no commitment to anything?
Nope. It's just more feasibility and finding out.
Secure water.
Sources are all in.
Any discussion? Other discussion there?
I mean, it's a two-year process. The slower we drag our feet and muddle through it, the longer new housing isn't available in our community.
So all those in favor of accepting the request to find a broker?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then there were written reports to the board, that included the technology report, maintenance report, transportation report, and the new volunteers report. Statements, concerns of the board.
Mr. Ingram, I do appreciate you being involved and asking those tough questions that you ask sometimes, because I feel like everybody needs to know. So I did have a discussion with Mark Mesmer right after that. And I think what she was saying was true, was there were a lot of boards that weren't allowing any kind of public comment. But I think as a board, we definitely need to look at where we place public comment, or at least have an agenda prior to the meeting out there so that people can review it. Thank you very much.
All right, so our next meeting date, there'll be a public hearing, there'll be a public hearing regarding the proposed contract for the new superintendent, next Monday, April eighteenth, at six P.M. here in the multipurpose room at South Spencer High School. And then the next regular meeting of the board will be Monday, May ninth, at six P.M. here in the multipurpose room at the high school.
Gina, may I say something real quick about that?
Sure.
The notice that was published in the newspaper, you all will notice, if you haven't looked at it, there's a typo in item G. It should be, "The board shall pay all but one dollar of the superintendent's help." It has a one and a comma, zero, zero. It's supposed to be a period. I'm going to correct it in the publication, but just so everybody knows. Thanks, Allison.
Okay, time to adjourn, six-thirty-six P.M. Can I get a motion?
A motion.
George will motion, a second?
I'll second.
For seconds, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh.
Fine, how are you?